This is the March 1st, 2022 meeting of the City of Angels Camp. It is 6:08. Pros can we do roll call please?
Mayor Brolio.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hernan.
Present.
Councilmember Siskornia.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Schrata.
Present.
Staff is present.
And next will be the Pledge of Allegiance. On high speed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number three is report out a closed session. Direction was given to staff. Next will be approval of the agenda. Does there any? No, there's no matter. Public that wants to change or look anything on the agenda?
Me?
If not, there anybody wants to change anything on the council or staff? Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
All with motion.
I'll second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign? Next is number five, public comment. The public may address the council on any items of public interest that is not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No actions may be taken. Matters are to be addressed may refer to city staff or place on the subsequent meeting agendas. Features are limited to five minutes per person. So if any member of the public would like to speak. Seeing them hearing them, I will close the public comment and move on to item number six. Consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or staff or council that would like to pull an item off consent agenda? Seeing them hearing them, I would look for a motion to approve A, B, C, and D.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign? I vote. Uh, next we want to regular agenda, item seven A. Public hearing. Give you one second because I have not been flipping. This was the historic commercial, okay. Rebecca, you still doing, are you doing anything for Amy or just?
No.
Okay.
I still get her stuff.
Alright. Amy, you are up then.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is one that the planning commission is sort of especially excited about. This is the first reading, we're asking that you set a second reading for March 15th. But basically, what this does in addition to catching us up on a bunch of previous changes we've been making over time is it establishes a sign review subcommittee for the historic district. As many of you know, when you need a sign in the historic district, it has to go to the planning commission for review. Inevitably, somebody will come in on Friday right after our Thursday meeting and have to wait a whole month in order to get their sign approved. So the planning commission asks that we establish a subcommittee who can do that on demand in between meetings. And that is what we are recommending that you do. The commission has unanimously approved a resolution of intent recommending that you adopt these ordinance. And I'd be happy to insert any questions.
Okay, before we move on without though, I did not read this, I was flipping pages, I'm sorry. So I will read it first. Item A is public hearing, introduce ordinance 521, waive the first reading, hold the public hearing, and set March 15th, 2022. As a second public hearing, consider amending Angels Municipal Code, AMC, Chapter 17, dot eight, five. Update planning commission procedures and establish a sign review subcommittee to facilitate sign review in historic commercial HC District in the Augustine City. Okay, now, I will open it up to any questions.
Um, how many people are going to be on that?
Two?
And you have to keep a line up?
Yes, we have two and a half for it.
You already pretty much have rules though, you have to use historical colors, right? And they have to be?
Yeah, but they're pretty.
They sort of look like a whole package.
Yeah.
Yeah, so really, other than the size, it's very flexible.
Sounds like a good idea.
Any other questions from staff or council?
I just had a quick question about the update procedures to recognize a 10-day rather than a 15-day appeal period as previously adopted. And just wanting to know why you guys are shortening that, just is it just to expedite things or?
Additionally, it is 10. We're not quite sure why it was extended to 15. And also, we were finding that when it went to 15, it meant that we would have a planning commission meeting, somebody would decide they didn't like our decision, and then we would end up having to skip a month and a half to get the next plan, uh, city council meeting to have occurred. Whereas keeping it at 10, we were more able to get it quickly to the council. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep, anybody else for open up the public hearing? Okay, at this moment, I will open up the public hearing. Anybody that would like to comment on this ordinance? See?
Amy, back.
I will close the public hearing. And at this moment, there's nothing we have to do on that because we have our second meeting. Next, we move on to item B. Public hearing, introduce ordinance 522, waive the first reading, hold the public hearing, and set March 15th, 2022. For a second hearing, if considered, Amy Augustine, City Planner, you are up.
Um, first correction, A basically repeats B. A is supposed to be that we are codifying the California Housing Accountability Act in Section 1706, 210. And in 1706, 220, we are adding a provision for low-barrier navigation centers, which sounds like we are establishing an airport.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is something that's in our general plan, both of these, that say we will do this. And we had to in order to get our housing elements certified by the state. What it means in English, low-barrier navigation center, is it's an alternative to a homeless shelter. You must be referred there. You have 24/7 staffing there. You have, so instead of lining up every night, staying overnight, and leaving the next day, you actually stay here. And you can be there 24 hours a day where you receive mental health counseling, job counseling, health care, et cetera. And you are moved on to permanent housing. So it is a little bit closer to a transitional house. And it's not as raw, I guess, as a homeless shelter. It's a little bit more trying to get somebody who's homeless permanently housed instead of just being a bus stop for them. So that's what that is for. We are proposing the two districts under state law that appear to qualify and be required for low-barrier navigation centers. Public could qualify. And also special planning. Again, if somebody has a special planning district, they would have to want this on their property and apply to get it. So that's low-barrier navigation center. The California Housing Accountability Act, we have all had experience with already on the Habitat for Humanity project. It basically explains if you're going to deny an affordable housing project, you must make climbing X, Y, and Z, and Q, and W. And this particular change, we've locked and copied it straight out of state law and flopped it in the proposed code. So that said, I would have to answer any questions.
And you're saying we have to add these to our ordinancees to comply with state?
Correct.
There's always compliance.
Always compliance, it's in our general plan. It says we have to do it. We will basically have to amend our general plan if we change our mind about doing it. And we, again, locked and copied straight out of the state code.
I had a couple of questions, one was, um, under section 5B. Um, I just wrote a note under here, do we have this? Um, it's if the local agency has failed to identify that paragraph. And then those under C, I also have, we have this question mark. And that, I think that was the list of, what was it? Of the zones. And it was?
Public and special planning. We have proposed public and special planning to be the qualified zone. And so, and you wanted 5B, your question?
5B and 5C.
If the local agency has failed to identify in the inventory of land and its housing element sites, we do comply with 5B.
Okay.
And, um, we do comply with 5C.
Okay, great.
And then I had another question as far as the, um, what's it called? The, uh, low-barrier navigation? That's such an odd term for that. I thought it had to do with drones.
I thought it actually had to do with media, highway media.
So on, so this was kind of hard to read, um, this zone.
It was.
It was really hard to read. So under, um, C, allowed zones, um, special planning zoning district, uh, what is that?
And it's also supposed to be the public, there is an error.
Okay.
And public.
Okay.
Special planning is a zone that, we don't have a lot of them. They're located in high-visibility areas in the city. And they're basically areas that are like getting a choker in a deck of cards. You get to propose what you want to do generally in mixed-use kind of a format.
Okay. And then just a couple other notes on there. Are there conditional use permits that are required for this? And are we contacting neighboring properties to these, this, um, these special planning zoning districts over?
By state law, you cannot.
Okay.
They must be, you know, red counter to, a non-discretionary type of a thing. And the requirements and procedure are covered in D and especially E. So we will have to basically prepare an application for them. We have 60 days to act. And, um, basically, all we are doing is making sure that they comply with state law in terms of there is a certified, uh, agency that meets the qualifications, who has required people for these, that there is sufficient staffing, they have gotten their licenses, and that's sort of what we do, and that they comply with the statute.
So we can't require anything of these, um, low-barrier navigation?
Nothing?
Centers? We can't say, well, are you having felons or violent criminals there? Like, we can't say that, you can't do that, right? We can't have rules about that?
You can't say that you can't. It's just my understanding that they tend, in reality, to focus on families. Realistically, because there aren't a lot of these. And they go where the demand is highest and where they can do the most good. And so they try to focus on families with homeless children especially. But I think the main thing is that unlike a homeless shelter, which can be pretty much anywhere in our commercial districts, these, you absolutely have to have people on SNAP who are actually going to do something with alcohol abuse or somebody where they can get treatment as opposed to just giving them a bit. So that's sort of the main difference there.
I think that's all for me.
Anybody else have any questions, others? Seeing them hearing them, I will open the public hearing. On ordinance 522. Anyone who can open speak for or against anything? Okay, I will close the public hearing. And there's no action on that one because we will set the next hearing for March 15th. Item C, public hearing, introduce ordinance 5... Okay. 523, waive the first reading, hold the public hearing, and set March 15th, 2022. For a second public hearing, consider adding Angels Municipal Code, Section 15, dot zero four, dot zero four five. Incorporating parcel and subdivision map findings related to fire protection in accordance with state law. Amy Augustine.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the reason I handed that map out just now is because those are very high fire hazards, very zones designated for the City of Angels Camp. And they are the areas to which this code change would apply. And this code change would apply specifically to those areas where you're going to do a parcel map or a subdivision map. And basically, you have to do, um, special findings now when you adopt a subdivision within a very high fire hazard severity zone. And as with the prior codes, we copied straight out of state law and dumped it straight into the proposed code. So that said, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the councilor staff?
So this map is reflecting already previously identified high fire zones?
Very high fire hazard severity zones. And basically, the state doesn't really have jurisdiction over the city because we're local. But the new state law does have jurisdiction over local areas only in those zones. And only in the particular circumstances. So, and these are basically, um, basically, it's all TADS property. It's, we're Nathan Lives. And it's, um, where our boundary lane extension is.
Correct.
So should somebody put in a subdivision in any of those zones, this affects the, uh?
It does, it affects, you have to make additional findings in addition to your normal ones. I will also tell you that a grant application was recently submitted to do a fuel, um, break. You will shade a fuel break through, um, most of that.
The one that's over?
It would go Gold Country and up through the factory.
Okay. And if we did have the extension of Frog Jump Plaza there, like a subdivision, that, that changes then?
That's actually a commercial development.
A commercial development.
That's not parcel map.
That's not really a parcel map.
So, oh.
And then there's this funny thing is when you do something like that, you revolve vegetation.
Right. That's why. So you're removing that, so then it would?
In my opinion, it changes the fire hazard severity. In the opinion of the state, we still have to make these findings of it. I, I think they'd be fairly easy to make, when there's no vegetation left.
Right.
And we have fire hazards.
Any other staff or council members? At this moment, I will open the public hearing. Remember, the public would like? Once, twice, I will close the public hearing. And that is also scheduled for March 15th. So next will be item D. Clean California, Calvers Gateway Sign Project, update, Rebecca.
Hello, it's wonderful to see everybody's faces.
Hello.
So, uh, tonight's item is primarily informational item, just to give you an update on what the county is up to. And it is also a wonderful lesson in, uh, you know, chance favors the prepared. Uh, this Clean California program came out, it was kind of a one-off. The county applied, um, for a grant for the, to install monuments signs. And we have this wonderful plan on the shelf. And they submitted our plan with the application and they were funded. So they will be installing, um, nine signs, they're going to do, let's see. So the signs that I had in your staff report are incorrect. Oh my gosh. This poor laptop is so slow. Alright, if it ever signs to you, we'll just act together. It's actually, if you go to page 20 of the, uh, plan. So the signs that they identified, or they sent to me, uh, as signs they were going to install, um, were?
Rebecca, I'm sorry, page 20 of?
I'm sorry, you need to be, we have no technology. But of the plan, the sheet looks like this.
Okay.
And I can read, email it to everybody. It's the page that the county picked, I'm sorry, it's not in my staff report, it's all my sad presentation. No, it's of the actual?
Yeah, but it's in the presentation, right?
Yeah, well, it's in the presentation which we can't watch or can't look at.
Which one do you guys?
Go back, go back, right here.
We got, we got.
Hang on, there's like 58 to.
Do you guys like the hard copy where I've already pointed to the page?
We're going.
The county misunderstood, one of our pages says, uh, like monument area, and they took that as a monument signs. And they didn't notice that page 20 actually has all five signs identified in appropriate locations. So, uh, we will get with the county after tonight's council meeting. And we'll let them know that we are putting signs in the wrong location. And we'll work with them to kind of firm up the actual locations that we want to go, go with on this. So those are the five signs that we are going to install.
I have nine.
Well, there's five monument signs and four wavefinding signs. Um, and that's the second part of it. So the monument signs were in the plan and they're all going to be installed. And they're that nice, uh, rock with the frogs and welcome to Angels Camp. Kind of like a line, it's really nice, it's pretty cool, yeah. So those, that'll be the, the five monument signs. And then the wavefinding signs, they randomly picked four. And I'm not entirely sure why they picked the four that they picked. So we are going to get back together with them. Debbie and Amy pointed out that one of the really important signs is on page?
Yes, probably working.
W6.
Sorry, which page?
Page 24, W6.
Debbie just said, yes.
Yeah, so as you're coming in down Highway 4 from the High Country, you get this, the wavefinding sign that directs you to all the people downtown. So that's an important sign, I don't know why that wasn't in the, the four that they picked. So we'll go back and revisit with them. Let's see, so the four, other than W6, um, oh no.
Coming from Copperoffus.
Sorry, what?
I said the one coming from Copperoffus on Highway 4.
Yes. So, uh, as you're coming in the town from Copperoffus on Highway 4, there'll be a sign there for all of the great facilities that are out down towards Greenhorn. Um, that's another important sign. We have W21, which is identified on page 24 as well, I think, yes.
What number was that, Rebecca, I'm sorry?
W21.
Gotcha.
It's an interesting one, this is the one that I think is maybe we could swap out for W6, which is the sign we really want.
Right.
Um, W4 is just a sports complex and maybe City Hall, and it's kind of like you're already in town. So I don't know if that's the, the important sign. Uh, but for sure, the Greenhorn sign, one coming into town, and, oh, the historic downtown wavefinding sign.
Where's that one? Because I was just saying, I want to see one that says downtown.
It's W8.
And W9, isn't it, too? Or 19, sorry. I see 19 over here towards the fairgrounds side, it says it?
Oh yeah, it says historic.
Historic Angels Camp.
Historic, yeah. Historic downtown and historic Angels Camp.
Yeah. So W6, W8. And then, um, the Greenhorn sign. And W9.
And there'll be one, it's not here, coming up.
And that would say it.
That would say the same.
Another W6.
Right, so it'd be here.
Perfect.
So W6 is the one we probably want to swap out with W21. Otherwise, it would be W1, W... Oh, sorry, we had W1 and W8 for sure. W21 and W9, and those are the two. One of them is, it's the sports complex, it's over by Murphy's, Murphy's grave. And then we have W9, which is very close to, um, at the 449 intersection.
So it's W8.
Yeah. And that one is actually going to indicate what is up country. So if you're leaving town, it's a wavefinding sign for Bear Valley and, and up in Murphy's area. So either the sports complex sign or that W, um, the up country sign, are two that are options. We could swap out so we can get W6 back, which is a pretty important sign. Are those four, are you good with those four locations?
Murphy's, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, it's confusing, Amy and I were having a tough afternoon. Uh, W1 is the Greenhorn sign. Um, and then W6 is the, um, sign coming in, coming down from Murphy's on Highway 4.
Right.
So then our other options are W21, which is on Murphy's, and it indicates you're at the sports complex. We have, W9 is one that they selected, and that's up at 449. And it directs you to the amenities of country. And then they also have W8 identified. W8 is also located close to 449, but that's as you're coming into town. And it's directing you to in-town stuff. So I think W21 and W9 are the two, two signs that either or could be swapped out for, for W6, which is important. I would think we, I don't know if we want to, you know, W9, the sign that directs you to up-country amenities, you know, it's not really advertising.
Yeah.
In those amenities, yeah.
We don't want that.
We can't, we can't W9.
W9's out, okay, so it's going to be W1, W21, W8, and W6.
Well, W21 and W... 21 is for?
No, I thought she's saying one. You're saying W1?
Oh.
What about W?
Oh, it's on the other 12.
W1 is for Greenhorn.
For 21, which has more information on it.
W21 has the potential to have a lot of information directly leading you to come to the museum. Yeah.
Because there's so many people that come into town that go to that sports complex from other schools and, I guess.
That's right.
Right.
But we can add to that, correct?
We only have four wavefinding signs with this grant.
No, but I mean, can't we add to the actual sign itself? Okay.
Same just for?
Just for, yeah, I mean, we could add to that.
Yes.
Yeah.
With arrows telling you which way you go once you get to 49.
W11.
W11.
I mean, the only thing about, isn't?
Flip and turn.
W21, if I'm looking at this right, isn't, doesn't this?
Not that.
Doesn't it literally add?
Add the sports complex.
Add the sports complex, so it's kind of, if you already got that far, you don't really need an arrow to say you made it.
We could work on moving that up. I think they were trying to stick to signs that were in Caltrans driveway. So have a, it's close to 49, but it, that one's still not in Caltrans driveway. Oh, I guess they, they potentially would want it on 49 indicating going out to sports complex.
So we don't have anything coming in from 49 from the Sonora side?
That's it.
From Sonora, yeah.
Uh, we have a monument sign.
Oh, that's right, that's the fraud one, right?
Yeah.
And W19 also, the fairgrounds, historic angels, visitor center, Ubica.
W19 wasn't on.
So we don't get that one?
We don't get 19?
We don't get 19, oh.
I agree, I think we need 19. Wouldn't they want that one rather than the sports complex one?
I thought we were doing 19, 6...
1.
8, and 1.
I thought 9, 8, 6, 49. Who isn't big out?
Uh, 1, on my page, I have 1.
On page 23, sorry, really quickly, we have 1. And we only have 1, which is the W1. Coming in from Front Highway 4.
Of course, we'll, we're green.
Okay, got it. And then on page 24. We'll have 6. Which is coming in from Murphy's.
At the old, at the old Highway 4.
That's great.
And we'll have 8.
Yeah.
8, you basically have the intersection, just on different sides of the street.
We don't get none.
No, we'll have to get rid of.
9, isn't it?
We'll delete 9. Because it's pointing to the stuff not in town.
Right.
And then 21. So Greenhorn, the sports complex, the wavefinding as you're coming down Balacito, and W8, which is?
I thought we were getting rid of 21.
Uh, no, we're talking about getting rid of 9, which is the sign that tells you what's up Highway 4.
How many of these signs do we get? We have four.
We have four.
Four, no, I think, I think they want to get?
Which four would you like?
Yeah, I think that they were talking about keeping W19. And getting rid of W21.
That's what I thought, too. I thought we were getting rid of the sports complex and picking up W19.
Okay.
Keeping W6, keeping W8.
Yeah.
Dumping W9. And keeping 1.
We get 4.
So 1, 6, 8.
19, 16.
1, 6, 8. Yeah.
Amy?
Our wavefinding.
Good thing we're not drinking like this.
So, uh, just clarify, the page is in your staff report. So just clarify, the page is in your staff report. You guys need to correct.
Right.
Because they grabbed the wrong page, so we'll go educate them on the right page. And then I have the two examples of the two different signs, the monument sign and the...
So then on south end of town, we have the monument sign.
Yeah, we'll have the added entry monuments. And then it's located on page 20.
20, which one is that?
So they're the ones with the red on top.
And those with the 5.
Yep. So as you're coming into town up Highway 49, coming down to Balacito, we'll have one at Bryan Park. We'll have one on the new bypass coming into town up at the 449 intersection by, what's up there? No, McDonald's. And we're going to have one at the Altaville School. And then we'll have another one at the Noel before you get to Angel Oaks. So basically.
At the Altaville School?
Why not further?
Yeah, that seems like it's what Angel Sewer drain is.
Yeah, like coming into town, not quite in town.
Where we, where we actually have that little park strip.
Oh, we do, with that welcome to.
Right there in front of...
Capello and 49, France.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was talking about in front of the mobile home park too.
Oh, yeah. Across from, oh, the other mobile home.
Right next to Wayne and signs.
Or, I mean, down by Capello would be great too.
That was in the north plant for the sidewalks.
Right, sidewalk and the...
Put it in the north side to put it down at Capello on 4 so that it helped to slow people down like they were in.
Like they're in a city, yeah.
Right.
I think putting it next to the schoolhouse thing, so.
There was land, there was land.
Well, I think it'll get law, see it, no one will see it.
Totally, yeah.
No one sees the schoolhouse, so.
Yeah, we could put it down in the corner. I think Capello would be... And there was going to be a bus stop there too, right? If the traffic came in, there's going to be an area there to plump that in.
Yeah, that's in the north.
Can we move the location that they're recommending?
Well, yeah, because they picked all the wrong locations for the monument sign, so we need to correct them on the correct locations, so.
Oh, okay, great.
We're hoping to correction.
Yeah, correct that.
What's in town? I think the only other one that I thought was kind of, is right here the Balacito one.
Right in town.
But I feel like it's just kind of like, here.
It almost should be further, it should be further up. Across from like, I don't know, filthy park or... Maybe where the swimming pool?
Well, that's what sells the same thing.
Triumph Park, but Triumph Park is also where the walk, ride, bike, everything's going to take off from there too. So it's going to be at some point, that monument will look, that monument will fit. I think we'll start from there. I mean, at least that's...
Was that not going to start at Salty? About that bike trail?
It goes by, it goes in front of it, but there, there was that old courtyard and we were talking about lockers and a whole, like a complex. That was all where you were going to start there, is at that Triumph Park.
Yeah.
And the, it's where cowboy stores are stuck there too now. We're not using that exactly anymore, so yeah.
Yeah, the goal was definitely, especially for those bigger signs, is we need to find locations where either Caltrans or the city owns the right of way.
Right.
So there's some right of ways. Because we cannot purchase right of way or the county cannot purchase right of way. All right, are we good?
I think so, you?
I think so. This is exciting.
When did they project this to start?
That's a nice question.
I'm telling nothing.
I know, they're doing the environmental thoroughfare for all the sites right now.
Okay.
So we just need to get them one first, they get our... All right. So then, this is it in terms of the grand, the kiosk. Like all the other things that was included in this, they just included it. I mean, they included it in the grant, but then they're only giving us the now signs, so. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Rebecca before I open up public comment or anything real quick? Okay, any public want to ask Rebecca, any questions ready?
Mr. Hubbard, thank you for the floor. Could I ask, this is the wayfaring sign that we're looking at?
Yes.
My concern is that this looks like it's for a pedestrian mall. And I just don't think it's big enough.
What page do you want?
This is 27.
Okay.
You're talking about the actual sign?
The actual sign itself. So if you look at that, it's four foot seven, that means that that'd be actual...
Seven?
Wait, 27?
Wayfinding 27.
Oh, 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 we're looking at the slide numbers. They have the different version for what you have.
Oh.
You present so well.
Where's that?
That's in the book.
Page 38. 38. 28, 38.
But those are 100.
We have 4.
There we go.
38.
Here, I'll share with you.
I'm going to let the guy scan the question.
Exactly, yeah. That's why I said, it looks like it's a sign for pedestrian mall. It doesn't look like it's big enough for us, to be perfectly honest. The wayfaring signs are in Murphy's, but all the ones telling people where things to go in Murphy's and everybody misses it because they're all small and big. And I would just, for my two cents, I would like to see a much bigger sign, much simpler that just says downtown or historic Angels Camp with an arrow pointing at 4 and 49. I think you'll miss this. That means if it's...
And you're talking height you're going to miss or the size of the sign with the word on it?
The size of the sign. I think if you're a visitor and you don't know what you're doing and you're coming in and you're looking at the intersection that's going red and if somebody else is in the car with you, you might catch it, but that lettering is only going to be six to eight inches.
There's a picture on slide 47 that shows it to scale on the corner of where the...
439.
No, it is, I mean, I think in certain areas, I'm just showing you a...
Oh, gotcha, that'll show you one, so you can visualize it.
And I'm not 100% positive on what you can put on your ads either. I agree, the bigger the better. But I'm not, that would be for Rebecca and Amy to find out what's, I don't know.
If I could ask, I mean, I think that this is, I mean, this is fine, but I just think in addition to this, we need something that's bigger and that's more visible on that intersection to push people down to us. I, just to let everybody know, I opened a CDB office in Murphy's and the number of people that I've talked to that didn't even know Angels Camp downtown existed that we pushed back down. And it's so important that we have a proper sign there. And we shouldn't wait. So I just, I just also like you to know that I've been putting money aside in the CDB budget because I think more so than just attracting people, we have to start taking care of our visitors here. So I'm looking towards infrastructure and putting up proper signs. So I do have money to put up a sign. And I'd like just to figure out how to do that with council.
And then, at some point when that 4 and 49 intersection comes through there too, to my knowledge, Caltrans says we can, I don't know to what extent, but we can also help design that and we can put some stuff in there too and maybe some different signage and stuff in the middle. I'm not 100% positive, but that's kind of what the talk that I remember is when when that intersection gets designed, if the roundabout goes in, that middle section, we can kind of design to do some different things too. If we wanted a big frog or an American flag or... Right, Caltrans, Caltrans kind of said, we will get input on designing that. So maybe there could be a big ore cart with...
Frogs.
I'm throwing out, I'm throwing out all we want. I'm throwing out big grandiose design.
No, that's what I, I mean, every conversation represented for each town, so we stay cohesive. But what I'm asking for is even before this happens, if there's something that we could do to just actually drive people downtown.
Oh, you're saying you want to do this before this even gets put in?
I would love to just put up a sign now, but I do think it needs to be big. I do think it just needs to say historic district with an arrow.
Do you want it coming up 4, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, 4.2 million cars is what I've been given as the estimate of. Granted, a lot of those are local, but unless you magically decide to turn right, you have no idea that downtown Angels exists. And we see a great flow, we've been seeing great flow of traffic at the museum, but we would see far more if we actually could.
Where would you suggest putting it?
Across the intersection, where that, the violent banner was.
Okay.
I think, I don't know who owns that property or how that would happen, but I've got money to do it and I'd like to do it, I just don't know how.
So we can probably direct you to talk to Amy.
Yeah.
And go through our planning department to get that.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the feedback on these things. Rebecca, is there a way to change this design or is that like ship sailed? To make this bigger or it's cost prohibitive?
I don't know, actually I would defer to Debbie, because she was here before the whole development of the plan. I'm sure that conversation happened.
So when this was put together, there was a lot of community outreach from residents and businesses and they walked up and down the street to kind of get an idea of flow of things. And then we had this professional person who actually created a sign this size and put in these strategic locations and it did drive buys to measure and see how we would do it. So I personally think less is best on a sign. I think some of these get a little bit too much in regards, you know, six lines is a lot of information all at once. And to me, if you say historic downtown, as you're getting to downtown and you see the museum, you're going to see these locations and then businesses need to make their signage kind of stand out so people can see them. So that was the only thing that was kind of debatable in these meetings. So they came up with the standard, no more than six lines, but I think less is best. And like when you see sports complex, it's just that's all you see. You don't have to worry about reading five things as you're driving, you know, 35, 55 minutes.
It's like on the airports, you're going to figure out where you're going.
Yeah, so, you know, I think size wise, that was, you know, conditioned more or less. I mean, there's rules about all these signages and the right way and how big you can be and those sorts of things. You might be able to, I think this was four by seven, if I recall.
Just about, yeah.
You might be able to go a four by eight. But again, I think the verbiage just needs to be less is best. So focus on maybe two things. And, you know, to me, historic downtown, maybe Frog Town. That's going to get people in the link that we want to go and, you know, look at these other signs, but.
Rebecca, you said that we, we can change the text, the wording on all the signs, so. Because I did, I can't find it right now, but I think one said, Greenhorns, golf, world mar... It said like four things that are all...
Mark Resort, Green...
Yeah, so that's a little repetitive.
Downtown Icons Parade.
And the other thing that you're seeing changing is, you know, I forget what the teeny boppers call it, that Martin might call it, but instead of a word, it's got a signal.
Emoji.
Emoji, thank you. Again, so more emojis are being used for different things, yeah.
I do like the ones for like gas, restaurants, lodging. Those are easy, you know what they are and they don't take, yeah, they're universal, they don't take up a lot of space.
I do think the parking icons though, because I think most people are used to seeing the P.
Yeah.
They wouldn't necessarily know what P or what U mean. It looks like a little RV and a...
Is that for RV parking? Can we request a parking sign? Have we ever done that?
Well, we have one. We have two downtown. I think, you know, location is everything because, you know, the downtown one was there at the visitor center at the time and that was the best location at the moment. But now, you know, it could probably be backed up higher on the road because by the time you hit that sign, you've missed the parking. There's two others, but they're harder to find, right? So, you know, strategically, I think there's opportunity to place them in other areas to make them a little easier. You kind of see it before you, before you hit it instead of actually. But a lot of conversation went into color and scheme and, you know, the frog and all that good stuff. So this is what was blessed and this went through planning commission review, city council review, Caltrans review and blessed and here you are. So we're fortunate that we have a plan because no other community does. And the county got the grant, so we need to work really, really quickly, swiftly to keep on the radar and stay on the radar to get these signs done. So, thank you.
I like the sign.
It's going to be amazing, yes. Any other public comment at the moment?
Let's fire one.
Okay, that was information only, so we will move on to item... Exactly.
I'm bringing a statement.
Item E, personal, Rebecca Callen.
Okay, so Monday, I think I will need my one month form order.
Are you serious?
Yeah. And in that time, I've done a lot of the questions to the women areas that we can change. I come into this job with a very strong background in finance, accounting and budget and contracts and procurement and all that good stuff. And the one area that, and I've talked to staff, department heads, everyone, one area that everybody has, is kind of chomping at the bit about is finance. And when you refer to finance for talking about real time, meaningful budget information, because that information is what we all use to make operational decisions. And it needs to be timely because you can't find out six months after the fact that you've already drawn for your budget. And the other thing is, if we have, you know, unanticipated revenue that comes in and everyone's running around, you know, hens and pennies, that wasn't necessarily what had to happen. And so what happens is staff aren't even comfortable to read your business purposes that were already in the budget because they're not entirely sure where they're at with their budget. So those are the types of things that I think staff have been frustrated with. So when I looked at the job description for the administrative services director and I looked at the other positions that are in finance and administration, the one that's really missing is that really strong fiscal component. The other thing is that the city has been contracting with, from, for accounting services. That's the other piece that it kind of breaks the flow because if you brought an external entity that's doing all of your accounting and they weren't just doing accounting, they were doing budget transfers, they were doing allocations of revenue, transfers. When that's not happening timely, that's also not giving us the ability to look at the budget in a meaningful way. So a lot of the things that they were doing was specifically because there's just... Governmental accounting is not something that everybody, you know, learns. It's something that you have to have an experienced person to understand. And there's also plenty of rules that the state will put upon us on how we do accounting and how we put the budget together and all of that good stuff. So you have to have someone who has a very good understanding of that. And the only way you can get that understanding is through education and certification. The other thing that the state has kind of put on all the agencies is historically, you could hire a finance officer or, you know, an accountant and you didn't necessarily have to have governmental experience, governmental accounting experience. They could have pretty minimal in it to learn on the job. What started happening though is those individuals who signed off on financial reports and they really didn't have the ability to truly comprehend what they were signing off on. So auditors started doing a lot more pumping work than just being auditors, which then created a conflict of interest because an auditor is supposed to remain independent. That's where they come in, they look at your books, they don't tell you what you should have posted or how you should have posted it. They're there to look at your financial statements and determine if they're clear, right? So what happened is the state said, hey, look, all these agencies, and we don't care if you're a little teeny tiny agency or a big giant agency. If you want someone to sign off on your financial statements, you have to meet certain qualifications and you have to have extensive experience and education. And if you don't, you're going to have to hire an accountant, a CPA firm or somebody who has the certification for the experience and qualifications to do that. So my recommendation is, we currently have a vacant director of administrative services. My recommendation is to actually create a finance director position. The city used to have a finance officer position. That isn't the classification that we need. We need a higher level classification for that. The salary would be the same as the administrative services director and I think that's important because if I fly it at what the historical finance officer was, we're never going to get anyone qualified at the level that I need them to be qualified. So the thing with the contract that we have with Rams, which is Rogers, Anderson... So the thing with the contract that we have with Rams, which is Rogers, Anderson, Lodi and Scott, this year, the contract was for seventy-two thousand dollars. Next year, it'll be for a hundred. And it goes up every year from that. I need to meet with him. My recommendation is to terminate the contract, which we fully have the ability to do. And we would be saving that amount of money. The salary for the finance director, it was already contemplated in the budget for the director of administrative services. So it's, you know, it's a net zero in terms of doing that. And as such, there'd be no additional cost. We'd actually end up saving a hundred thousand plus per year. And what I need from you is to approve the classification and approve the salary to be put at that range so that I can start recruiting immediately. And that's it.
Questions, comments?
I just have to get my clarification. So originally, we had a finance officer and then that position was eliminated. And sort of, I don't want to say replaced, but.
It was reclassified, yeah.
Reclassified as a director of administrative services. And then we brought in Rams because that person or that position didn't have the qualifications.
They didn't, so finance wasn't fair, it wasn't fair what they were doing. Most of what they were doing was very administrative. And so the piece that was missing was that physical piece.
Right.
And couldn't sign off here.
And they put fine off on the yard.
Yeah.
Got it. I guess I'm just confused why we would have gotten rid of the finance officer position. But that's, 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 okay. That was more my clarification. So it makes sense because I was under the impression that although we had an auditor, we also had to have CPA as well as, yeah. So this, to me, makes sense. And that's it.
I think this will serve our community greatly, especially with our department heads knowing at any moment where they are with their budget and spending and maintenance, especially the maintenance piece. So.
I, I think this has been lacking for my time here on council. As far as the business piece, I give you kudos for identifying it in only a month. It's a lot of the questions that I think have all come up during these meetings about real time finances and asking questions and who does what. Like I've had so many questions about looking at the job descriptions and saying, who does this and who does that? And not having an understanding, this fits the puzzle and completes the workflow in the city hall department for me. And then with real time financial reporting, it's, this is great. Plus it saves us money. So this is a win-win.
Any public comment at the moment? Seeing them here now, any other questions before we ask for approval? So you need approval on the salary range and need approval on flying the job also? Or no, reclassified?
So we need approval for removing the, so at the, at the back on the last page.
Yeah, remove the director.
Removing the director of administrative services at range forty-nine.
Yep.
And we're adding a finance director at range forty-nine.
Two different motions or one?
One.
I'd like to make a motion for removing the administrative service director and creating a finance director, both at forty-nine, if that else is needed.
I'll second.
At first, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who thought the same thing? Five oh Rose.
And then we need to, no more motion?
Sit.
We don't have to sit, quiet.
I think you did approval for the position.
Right.
Can't recruit for something.
Can't for something, it's not bad.
Uh-oh. I have to put my stuff up there again.
Damn it.
Sorry.
Okay, move on to item number eight, administration report.
So just a couple of things. So I am on the next meeting. My understanding is that you all wanted to have a discussion regarding the status of the city gate strategic plan. So that is going to be on the next, the next agenda for the fifteenth. So we can bring that back, have a conversation about it and get direction on that. So I just want to let you know that that's where that's at. I am researching several policies. And if we don't have them, that'll be working with staff and with legal in terms of those policies. So you're going to be seeing a lot of that starting to happen. So either it's a very outdated policy, and I'm not talking about personnel, what I'm talking about is the management of the city functions so that we have, you know, everybody has an idea of what best practice is and what everyone's role is and how to get it through. So we're going to be working on a lot of those. Right now, I'm working on budget. So technically, budget is supposed to start going out this week. So I'm scrambling, trying to get those pieces all together so we can get that out to department heads. And part of that conversation will also happen on the fifteenth with the council in terms of some direction to include with that. And I'm also going to start, we had talked at the last meeting about updates for council. So right now, what we're going to do is we're going to start doing on the second meeting of every month, we're going to include some financial information. One is like a check register. So we are updating our technology so that we don't have to physically sign checks anymore. So I'm working with the vendor to get that in place. And so instead of you having to come in and sign the checks, we'll have a little bit of all right then, we'll bring that to the full council. So you can see all the changes that were made for the month prior. In addition, I will be putting together kind of a higher level where we're at with regards to the budget, budget to actual, not in the leads. It's more of a matter of here's where we're, here's areas where we need to pay a little bit more attention. And here's why this happened. Or, you know, you know, good news, this is what's going on. So it's going to be both of those, but on a, on a, on a up here level. And I'm also going to start working with staff to start sending me updates. Not necessarily on a weekly basis, but on a regular basis, more than quarterly. So that I can identify areas that, you know, that I can bring to the council or send to the council on a regular basis of good things that staff has done. That could be, you know, project updates or it could be, you know, just things that you're going to want to know about. And I think that with that communication, I think, you know, everyone will start feeling like everybody knows kind of what's going on. So that will, that will be starting here pretty soon. So I would say probably for the next several months, we're going to have probably fairly full agendas because you just have a lot to catch up on those things here. And then the other question, just kind of think about it in your heads, I will be bringing it up at the next meeting. Historically, I guess, I was told that the budget meeting, you guys kept all other items off of that particular meeting. And my recommendation would be, we don't do that. Or if we're going to do that, make sure we have another meeting. Staff feel like if they miss that meeting, they're having to wait a whole, potentially another month or at least another meeting to get the regular operational agendas. So just think about that. We're going to talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, both as well.
And that's it.
Did we ever get springbook for one of the updates?
Yeah.
No, so that is not just a like.
Thing.
That's not just like update thing. The, the, they call it the schema, but basically the look and the deal of it changes. There are also data columns of data that change. So all have to coordinate that with Spring Drive, but we would have to do some good version cleanup to do that. And I need to see to what extent we would need to do that. And then I would also prefer to wait until we get the finance person on board. So there's going to be probably a different timing to somebody who may be following there. So in all honesty, I'm probably looking at next year.
Okay, fine. And then our website update too.
That is in the last.
Got it, right now. That's already, I saw some changes.
That is the job description.
I know, it's easy.
It makes so much sense, yeah.
I should go.
I did that.
I'll send it to Lynn.
Yeah, I do today. Thank you, everyone. Council reports.
Okay, let's see. Aqua is doing a great raffle, gas, cash and grocery, twenty dollar tickets. You win two thousand dollars at Angel's Food, a thousand dollars at Nasha Run and five hundred dollars cash. We are only selling five hundred tickets. So that's going to go on. We're drawing the first, or the first and only winner at the First Farmer's Market. So, yes, so.
And how much is the ticket?
Twenty dollars.
And where did they buy it?
Mingos, Pickled, Pickled Cafe, they stocked in, Aqua Office and Crafty Chick. And from any Aqua member because we all have to stock it. When is the First Farmer's Market? June tenth.
Did they hire a manager?
Yes, we did. A gal named Sage.
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 Her name is Sage.
Her name is Sage. She's from Tullaway County. She runs a farmer's market that, that way once a month. But she is going to be managing ours.
Great.
That's about all I have.
And you do Thursday night?
Yeah, our, okay, yeah, Thursday night downtown is actually on St. Patrick's Day. We're doing Reuben sandwiches.
Are you serving green here?
Yeah.
I mean. We don't do cakes, so, you know, like just pour your cup, drop some green in there. I might be like. All bar ten. I've been a busy little parent. UWPA, we had a UWPA meeting and I can't think of anything real reportable there.
There was.
What do you got?
Go, I'll go.
I'm going to let Alvin report on UWPA.
I have been, well, we have nothing, that's it, that's all I'm going to report. What else is it?
So I attended the Chamber Mixer at Bank of Stockton, was that last Thursday?
It was last Thursday.
So I know I've interfered with Angel's camp.
Oh, God.
That camp was terrible.
I just saw my papers.
Two hundred and fifty people were at Bank of Stockton.
Yeah.
I think I was getting money here.
And then I attended the AMA Crafty over the weekend, which was, I thought, also well attended. It sold out. And it was really fun to see all the kids as servers. That's always great. And then tomorrow, I'll be at the wagon trail groundbreaking and then call tomorrow.
I attended the Central Sierra Economic Development District meeting last week. There was a presentation by the Sierra Business Council, which was great because a lot of people, I think, on that, even on that committee, don't really sometimes understand what their job and function is. So it was nice to actually hear that as a new person on that committee. Motherlode Dog Training did a presentation as well. There's some upcoming presentations for various HR issues that our businesses are dealing with and recruiting during COVID. So our local businesses can take part in that. And there's also a homeless hiring credit going on right now where, until 2026, and you can get up to thirty thousand dollars up to employees' tax credit if you hire a homeless person that's gone through like Sierra Hope or something like that. So great information on all of those types of things for our small businesses. And I will be attending the wagon trail groundbreaking tomorrow as well. And I attended the Bank of Stockton Chamber Mixer.
I did not do the Chamber Mixer because I was at wrestling practice for AMA. And I went to the AMA Crafty, it was great. My kids were hooking table and stuff. And it's kind of fun to see all of them run around and they all had a good time too, I think. They got pizza. It was, it was a good event. It was nice seeing everybody. I will probably not be a highway four wagon though. We just started a whole new thing at work and it was crazy today. Probably going to be crazy, but I'll try. As for UWPA, the vegetation reduction around Hunter's Dam, we applied for a grant for one point five million. And we got pretty good chance, I think, to get it through Calfire because there's already a whole vegetation cleaning program's been going on. And this is the last of the key from Hunter. So hopefully we get that grant, which would be amazing. Dam safety is also part of stuff going on right now. That's going to have to, part of the FERC relicensing that's coming up at some point soon, which we are going to try and get FERC exempt and some different options. Budget is on track and looking pretty good actually right now. Frank, Kyle, Joel, those guys, the front office ladies, they've done a really good job of keeping everybody on track. There is, we're short a little bit of money because material has been tough to get. So they're hoping to be able to do projects towards the end of this year, but they're not a hundred percent sure.
One more thing.
What do you got?
I was just wondering. I just wanted to give an update. The Utica Kitchen is underway. So thank you, Debbie. She's coordinating with Aqua to clean it all up because we need it emptied in order to put everything in there.
Right.
So that's underway. And then I'm going to be signing for the playground equipment. So we're moving on.
That's great. That's both of those, that's awesome.
Are you that old stuff? It's not worth anything.
With some rest.
I think it's not, it's bad.
It's not good.
It was defested or very damaged or something.
I think why? It'd be easy at the house.
I'm just making, I'm getting melted down.
Things could kind of art.
No, but you could re.
Purpos some of it.
Purpos some of it, yeah.
We just have to get some tent and shop.
That's what I was going to say, isn't tent and shore.
Any other.
But you guys are talking about playgrounds.
Any other council reports, anybody miss anything else? Rose, you good? What else you got? What's exciting?
The calendar.
Okay, and you always email a calendar, so pass that. We will adjourn the meeting.
We made the motion.
No. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody who thought the same thing?
He didn't, he didn't say anything.